All right, it's 4:00 PM and I will call the November 29th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Please call the board.
Debbie Moore?
Here.
Tessa Conley?
Here.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Theresa Gardner?
Here.
Sheronne Lee?
Present.
Pablo Serna?
Present.
Gretchen?
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Next order of business is item two, citizen comments. At this time, three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the board, please submit a fully completed request card to the board chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, city boards cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at that time. Instead, city boards are limited to making a statement of specific information or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. It is not the intention of the City of Basraut to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the board to allow any member of the public to slur the performance honesty and our integrity of the board as a body or any member or members of the board, individually or collectively, nor any members of the city's staff. Accordingly, profane, insulting, or threatening language directed toward the board and/or any person in the board's presence will not be tolerated. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission on any item not on the agenda? Thank you. If not, then we will move on. Item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the October 25, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Commissioners, do you have any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve as is.
Motion to approve. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you. Item 3B, consider action to recommend approval of the McElroy Acres subdivision final plat being 8.415 acres out of Form Lot 62, east of Main Street, located between Pecan Street and State Highway 95, located within the city limits of Basraut, Texas, and forward to the next available city council meeting. Ms. Bill?
Good afternoon. So, the request before you is for a final plat, and this is going through, we have a process called the short form final plat, and it's basically for smaller, limited number, no more than six lots being created, that have a little bit of public improvements required, but not really enough to warrant a full preliminary and final plat process. So, this is a final plat. They've also done an engineering feasibility for the utilities, and those will have to be constructed before the plat gets recorded. So, this request is to create two new commercial lots and one new, one single-family agricultural lot. There's a house already on that lot that's being created. Along with the plat, the applicant is requesting to vacate the existing unimproved Poplar Street right-of-way and relocate that right-of-way to the northern edge of their property. It currently cuts through the property. It's something that was located there with the original town plat, or town layout with the old lots, farm and building blocks in the 1920s. So, they're asking to vacate that at the next city council meeting, and then with this plat relocate it to the north of the property. Staff really recommend keeping that right-of-way because otherwise Pecan Street becomes an over 1,400-foot-long cul-de-sac, and there are no other options for outlets for any future development in that area. So, future development can build this road to get back out to Highway 95 to create additional points of connectivity.
On this map, we have, are the gray lines existing, and then they just want to push it up a little bit?
Yes.
Or is that because it's not clear to me on this map?
Yes, on this map, my pointer does not work on these news screens, but you'll see the right, you see the existing center line for Poplar that goes to Mercedes Cove. If you follow that straight across to 95, that's the existing unimproved right-of-way. What they're asking to do, yeah, there you go, you can see. So, their property kind of takes a jog at the top. So, they have that strip that basically becomes unbuildable at the top if the right-of-way is not relocated.
But that right-of, that, there's that little sliver there, it looks like it belongs to another property owner, correct? So, we have a right-of-way there, but it's no longer go through to Poplar? Is that?
What's, I'm trying to-
If we move it to the top there, it looks like that continues into where there would be another property owner right there at the top.
Yes, well, so, let me show, the next slide, you'll see, there you go. The road actually will curve. So, the new, you zoom in on the very top part of that picture column. Okay, so, you see the new, the new right-of-way line, it still lines up with the Poplar Street intersection, but it has a curve to it at this point, and then it goes to the north property line. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's hard to see with this printout.
So, if I understand it, instead of Poplar just going straight through, it'll jog to the north?
Yes, it'll jog to the north.
And you want to keep the easement up towards the north edge of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, so you can see the cross-assess area is what's being vacated, so there's still a portion going to Poplar Street that are intersecting with Pecan Street that will remain, or be rededicated with this plat.
Sorry to miss your flow.
That's fine.
Make sure I'm looking.
I look at these things all day. So, this is the location map, it's between the Pecan Street and Highway 95, it's between the veterinary office and the skating rink, if you know this area. The currently, right now, there's an existing driveway onto 95 and then onto Pecan for the house that's already in existence there. Towards Highway 95, Tech Dot is the one who will have to approve any new construction of that driveway approach into Highway 95, and then the city will permit any new driveways. They already have the driveway out onto Pecan, but any new driveway should be permitted to the city. And we're also requiring an easement along the front of the property, parallel to 95, so that Lot 1 will be able to take access through that easement and not have to have an additional driveway out onto 95, because with the skating rink and then Lot 2, it's unlikely that Tech Dot would allow another driveway. So, during the plating process, that's one of the things that we look at, is making sure that there's that cross-access easement to provide for driveway connections through commercial properties, so you don't have as many driveways out onto major roadways.
So, we're funneling Lot 1 up to Poplar? Is that the idea?
Yes. And that's, will be worked out during the site planning process and with Tech Dot.
Okay, so Lot 1 and Lot 2, their primary exit will be onto Poplar, and then however Poplar goes into 95, Tech Dot deals with it?
Poplar or somewhere, probably on Lot 2, depending on Tech Dot's separation.
Okay.
Does Tech Dot have to approve a change of that easement for Poplar?
They do. They, for Poplar, no, but for the driveway connection, for the lot, they will, it's considered a change in use when a driveway goes from being agricultural residential to commercial, so they'll, they'll have to look at that and how that connects in.
So, this one right here is approved, going, Poplar going all the way through this. If we move this up, Tech Dot does not have to re-approve that, or they don't care?
We've talked to them about it, and they have been okay with that alignment, so.
Okay.
Also sidewalks will be installed as part of the subdivision process along 95 and Pecan Street during the development phase. There's existing zoning on the lots, it's C2 commercial along Highway 95, and then it's agricultural open space along Pecan, where the existing house is. Future land use for this area is neighborhood commercial, which residential and commercial development is compatible within that area. This is in compliance with the moratorium, it was in process prior to August 14th, it was already under review in our office, so it's received an exception from the moratorium. It's also in compliance with our comprehensive plan. One of the things they are, having to extend the wastewater system, there's a lift station over on Pecan and Poplar, and so they'll connect into the city's wastewater system for this development. It's also in compliance with the local government code. Plat is required, and they're developing three total lots with the public improvements that will serve those lots. It's also in compliance with our Chapter 10 subdivision requirements, which has been reviewed by city staff and Public Works, and meets all of our requirements. So, the recommendation of staff is to recommend approval to city council of the McElroy Acres subdivision, and it will go to the December 11th council meeting for approval.
I noticed that you have public comments on the notifications. Were there any objections sent from neighbors?
No. And again, if it complies with all of our rules, planning, zoning, and city council are required to approve.
So, the approval of the plat is ministerial, but in this case, the vacating of the easement is not correct?
Yes. That, that has to go to city council through an ordinance for the vacation. So, the process will be, they have, we'll have that on the agenda for council to approve before the plat gets approved.
And I can't tell, because even though I think my eyes are good, maybe it's not here. How, how far up are we moving the right-of-way or the easement?
About 50 feet.
50?
And what, it's staff's recommendation, that's staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Have a question. Miss Jones, I have a question.
Okay.
Well, in the future, are we going to have compatibility setbacks where we have these properties right up against residential, commercial up against residential, and are those factor into the decision of the size of the way they distribute the lots?
The setbacks on this meet our current zoning regulations, so the setbacks are reflective of what's on the books today.
Any other discussion? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? Ms. Jones?
I just was going to ask, you could speak to the, maybe, design regulations that would apply, because you talked about setbacks, but is it going to be subject to any sort of requirements for design or size or anything?
So, this is just addressing the subdivisions, so the dividing up of the lands into commercial tracks. The next step for both of the commercial tracks is site plan approval, so they'll have to go through engineering and architectural review for the building and parking and all of those things that, for what they wish to build there. So, our current development regulations in our zoning ordinance that require, you know, one parking spot per every 300 square feet, and, you know, masonry requirements on the front of the building, all of those will be reviewed at the staff level and approved administratively. But there will be a site plan required that also addresses drainage during that process.
Thank you. Mr. Huckman and Ms. Clampett, do you want to speak?
Yes.
Would you come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please, sir?
My name is Ed Huckman, and my wife Pam Clampett. We live on 804 Poplar, which is approximately seven acres. That's that little spot that she's talking about, the road, about Poplar Road, thinning all the way out to Highway 95. We own that little piece of property that the jet's out there. We're right across west from the veterinary. We have about seven acres there. And most of y'all probably don't remember, but years and years ago, Cynthia might, I don't know, but there was a lot of issues with the drainage, because Mr. Wendell Hayes, who owned the property, he had gravel pits and all that out there, and he was trying to do some developing on his own without the city's approval or anything. And we had to file a lawsuit to stop it, because the water was coming, affecting our property. That went on for years. There must have been five or six surveys out there, all different surveys, all different results. It was a horror story. What we're concerned about mainly is drainage, because we have had problems with it, with the water coming down onto our property, and it got worse. When there was like a four or five-inch hard rain, it would almost get into our house. And Margie Lee, who used to live, I don't know the gentleman's name, he's in, he has a music store, he lives where Margie is now, but Margie Lee, she had to get a lawyer, because the water was coming down the driveway off the hill of Hayes' property onto her property. The city made him stop digging a gravel pit. I don't know if y'all aware of it, but there's a gravel pit there, full of water, might be two of them. He was selling gravel illegally. City made him stop. And like I said, lawsuits went on, survey, the whole nine yards. And all we're concerned about with this survey here is plot number three. First two facing 95, doesn't affect us, doesn't join our property. But plot three does. We had no idea how they're going to divide that, because it's a gravel pit in there, and it's, the drainage, there's no drainage whatsoever. I don't know how they're planning on developing that in the future, if they plan to put homes there or something. But we have to be concerned about now and the drainage that this was caused. The road going out to 95, it's going to have to curve around our little piece there that we got, and we're not going to sell it. It's going to have to curve around that. We're concerned about the drainage problem that that's going to cause. It doesn't seem to be any, we're not getting any answers to it. How they're going to do it, you know, that's what, how they're going to do it. Is it going to be proper, or is the developer's going to, is it going to be left for the developer's decision, which we wouldn't want? But, you know, how's it going to be, how's he going to stop that drainage problem? And we would like to know that before anything's done. There, I think they're already starting to work on that road a little bit. They've got bulldozers over there, and-
Per our rules and the rules of the city council, people who are addressing us or the council have three minutes to speak.
I'm done.
I gave you a little extra time, but I appreciate your comments.
That's all right.
Before things are finally approved, I mean, Ms. Bills can talk to you about, and talk to us about what will have to happen as far as addressing drainage problems or what might occur before anything is finally approved. Any building can take place there.
Is she a city employee, or?
She's in the planning department, yes.
I'm done.
That's okay. Okay. Jennifer, why don't you explain to him what has to happen before anything's built there?
Sure. So, just kind of a little, the fall on this property, when you look, it's actually kind of the top of a hill, if any of you've gone out there, and it slopes, kind of, one side slopes north, northwest, the other one goes northeast back to 95. So, currently, the way the zoning splits on these properties is the properties, Lots 1 and 2 that are fronting 95, versus zone C2 commercial and can develop as commercial lots, they'll have to do site plans, they'll have to do full drainage studies. One of the things that we look at during the drainage review is that the detention happens in such a way that the flow does not increase in speed or quantity, time of concentration. So, you can't let the water drain off a lot faster or a lot more than it had been doing in the pre-developed conditions. So, that's one of the things their engineer will have to look at, and design a facility that'll make sure that that water is held to a point and then released into the system, not to create a detrimental effect. So, but for the Lot 3, the zoning on that is staying as agricultural open space, so the only things they can do on that property right now are single-family residential or agricultural uses. So, they still, if they're going to put down a large amount of previous cover through their agricultural uses, start to change the grade, they will still have to come in to the city and do a drainage study and a plan for how they're changing that lot, even under the agricultural open space. However, there's no other uses they can do there under the current zoning other than single-family or agricultural. So, if they want to develop more homes there in the future, they'll have to come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning, to change that zoning, and then do an additional plat to make that into more lots, because it's just one lot right now. Any more questions out of that?
So, my, my only concern with this, and it's not on the surveys, so it's the plat, so it's hard to tell, but moving Poplar up is going to stick it, it looks to me to be within 20 feet or so of this existing drive. So-
Yes.
While Tech Dot is saying that they don't necessarily have a problem moving it, to me, that would be an issue.
So, at present, there's no plans to build Poplar Street. It's, we're relocating the right-of-way. The right-of-way's been there, predating the current owner. The future development will either probably fall on the city, or a developer that's trying to make sure they get access at current, to try to get back to that area of Mercedes Cove. Once you turn that bend, you're, we're reaching a level of no connectivity for future fires. So, if anyone in that area wants to develop in the future, that's at the point we'll have to look at connecting that road. So, right now, there's no plans to build out Poplar, and at the time that Poplar gets built out, that's when we'll have to look at having the veterinary office share access off of Poplar.
Right, but it's important enough that we want to maintain it, we want to reserve the right.
Yes, we want to reserve, we want to reserve the right. We don't want to permanently give up that ability to have that future access into that neighborhood.
So, no plans to do it, but it will likely happen in the future. So, that's, that's my issue with this. I mean, obviously, the plat itself is a ministerial process, but as far as the, moving the easement for Poplar up, that's what I take issue with, that's me.
And sir, am I correct that the lot you're concerned about is Lot 3, and that will remain agriculture open space? And before anything can be built on there, they've got, anybody would have to come back and, for lack of a better term, jump through a bunch of hoops and make sure that the drainage is not going to be worsened before anything can be built. And you'll have plenty of notification if anybody wants to have that property rezoned, so that they could build on it. So, you would be, you'd be very, you'd be notified long before anything is approved, or one nail can be nailed. Sure?
What about the gravel? You said something, possibility, but they could build a single-family home, which is hope I hope.
I believe it's, they could build a home, not a home.
At current, there's, actually is a home already on that property, so it's, right now, it's being used as a single-family with some agricultural uses on the site. If they want to develop more single-family homes on that lot, or even if they want to tear down that existing one and build a new one, they'll still have to come through the city and get full permits for that. And that's possible in the future, but right now, since it's only one lot and the zoning restricts it to one house with agricultural uses. So, to do more homes on there, they'll have to come back to the city for rezoning and potentially replating.
Somebody go back, that lawsuit where everybody had a suit in the city, and there's a deal made about that particular area and the street, that somebody might need that affected that.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody might go back, redo that.
We'll do that.
If there was a, a judge, or a decision, question, about where it would be.
And, yeah, and the realignment of that road happened in the 90s, and then the city paved Pecan Street. That was part of the, I think, the judgment that came out of that, was figuring out the alignment, where the road is supposed to go, and then the city paved, because it had been a gravel road prior to-
You said something, I'm not understanding. Once Poplar is developed in the future, did I hear you say that the veterinary hospital will have to use that? They'll be, like, they'll lose their entrance off 95 and-
Potentially, yeah. That's one of those that'll be, when that road develops, that that'll be.
So, Tech Dot has the ability to shut down their driveway and force them to use Poplar, then?
I'd have to check on the, what the legal processes for that.
Can I get a better understanding of, because in the verbiage, it says, let me see if I can find the right wording here. I'm trying to better understand the reasoning for it, because the verbiage just says unimproved Poplar Street. So, to me, I'm reading this like whoever's wanting this right-of-way added is because of unimprovements to Poplar Street. So, can I get a better understanding then of, because sir, are you, are you concerned more so about future development and drainage issues, or the road, or the right-of-way itself and, and future development? Both?
I'm more than both, future development, how is that going to affect, because I know that, but y'all don't think, but it's a, so, but-
And the right-of-way?
It's going to affect, right?
The right-of-way as well. How's it going to affect drainage? So, then, I would like a better understanding of the reasoning of why the right-of-way. Is it just because Poplar has been unimproved? What is the reasoning?
The reasoning is, is the property owner, so the red outline is, is the area that they own minus that little strip in the middle, towards the top. So, that tiny strip at the top is, with the right-of-way in its current location, is undevelopable. It becomes kind of lost space, because it's part, it's, they own it, but it's, it's part, it was part of this larger lot at some point in life. And so, the right-of-way bisects it. So, by realigning the road, pushing it further north, they recapture that area to the south.
How long has the property owner owned this property?
Current property owner's owned it a year.
What's that?
Yeah.
A year?
Yeah, the previous property owner had owned it a while.
And that, and that right-of-way was there on the, on the survey or plat when it was purchased?
Yes.
Okay.
But the road, unimproved means, means that the right-of-way is there, it's owned by the city, by the people, it's an access point, but there's no improvements, there's no actual street in that right-of-way, is what that terminology means. So, at current, the only thing that changes is the alignment.
Okay.
At this point, it won't be paved. That'll be, be a future project, and when streets are constructed, drainage has to be addressed during street construction with the engineering plans.
But-
Yeah. No. No, it's not going to be a road, it's just going to be an unimproved access that, it's there for future use, so that we can eventually have that connection, because if you look at the larger area, none of that is accessed by any roads, and it backs up to the creek. So, you'd have to build a bridge over to the creek to get back. There's no access back to Mesquite.
So, we're looking at moving the easement north by, what'd you say, about 50 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And the easement will be there until some point in the future, then there'll be an actual road put in there.
Yeah.
But right now, it's just, it's an easement that is native land.
Yes.
One more question. What was the, you mentioned something about access to- What was the, you mentioned something about access to the commercial lots being from the future Poplar Street, not 95 necessarily, is that right?
What was the, sorry, was the question?
Access to lots one and two?
Yeah, so one and two will take access from Highway 95, Poplar Street.
Oh, Highway 95.
That, yeah, so they have, they do have an existing driveway right now, right where the current right-of-way actually comes out.
So, so even though there'll be two lots, there's only gonna be one entrance onto 95?
Most likely, TechDOT's the one who controls that. And we've been trying to work pretty closely with them to make sure that no additional lots are created that don't have that cross-access. So basically, you'll see it on 71, you'll see it that when someone subdivides, you know, they may have five lots, but they're only gonna get one driveway, and then everyone has to, their parking lots all have to connect together, basically, to have that access. Because with the speed of 95 at that location and some of the other traffic concerns, TechDOT, their spacing is fairly large between driveways.
Jennifer, going back to the, with the red line around it, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is that the Vet Clinic up there?
Yes.
You're talking about? So if the road stayed parallel right now like it is, and you were saying eventually the Vet Clinic may be asked to not have an entrance off 95, so if that was not changed and we did not approve the change and the road still had to remain the same, does that affect the Vet Clinic?
No, it would, we'd still have to figure out access and we'd, when that road got developed. It would something we'd still have to talk to TechDOT about.
Given the ministerial nature of this process, is this an all or nothing approval? Or can you approve the plat presented while maintaining the original right-of-way? Or is it an all or nothing?
It's an all or nothing. We'd have to redo the plat. And it is still contingent upon council vacating the right-of-way. So if council chooses not to vacate the right-of-way, then the, because they don't, at present, that land is not owned by the landowner. So the plat is assuming that council vacates and they can rededicate.
So the council has to take a motion to vacate that one plus then move it up north?
Yes.
So it'll be two actions from the council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's two separate items at council.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I wanna make a motion to deny.
Second that? Call the roll, please, ma'am. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny.
Sounds like a say.
Okay, I'll call the ball. Debbie Moore?
Yeah.
No to deny, no to approve.
Vote yes, you're voting to deny. I am voting no.
Patrick Connell?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Richard Gardner?
No.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
No.
Greg Sheeran?
No.
Nobody?
How many? The motion to deny fails. Now, we would need a motion. Jennifer, do we now need a motion to approve?
If you would like to entertain one, yes.
Otherwise, status quo.
Yeah.
Do any commission members wanna make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you call the roll? Now, if you vote yes, you're voting to approve.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Patrick Connell?
Nope.
Cynthia Meyer?
No.
Richard Gardner?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
No.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Greg Sheeran?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And that'll, this'll go to the city, the next city council meeting as the planning and zoning recommendation, and they'll, with the vote.
And sir, I do understand and, understand your concern because of the flooding issues that we have had. My vote to approve this is based on what I know the city is doing now to alleviate the flooding and to make sure other development does not exacerbate the problem and make it worse. So before anything is built, you'll be notified, you'll be kept abreast of what's happening if anything is built there, and you will have another opportunity to come back either to us or to the city council and voice your concerns.
The bulldozer out there now?
It might be out there, but he's not gonna build anything.
He is.
He's not gonna, he's gonna be shut down if there's somebody out there. And if there's, call, call the city planning department if there's anything going on out there, talk to Jennifer Bills and she'll deal with it.
And this lot has been, I mean, right now, it's one lot with a house on it that's been used supposedly agriculturally. So they are allowed to do agricultural uses on that lot at, to date, because they have not changed the use. And once the plat is approved, then that will change the situation out there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, commission members. We'll move on to item four, updates, update on the recent city council actions regarding community development items.
So since our last meeting, we, there was one item in the last meeting that got forwarded to city council, and it was the conditional use permit for 1603, State Highway 95. It went to, the November 13th meeting was approved on first reading, and it was just approved on Tuesday at the second reading, and that was for the manufactured home for Ms. Peterson. Staff also took, at those two meetings, we had seven exemptions from the moratorium total. Most of those are either, have been sheds, small additions to houses, or that they're trying to process a plat in the ETJ and have to have city approval before they can move forward with their application. And that's all we've done in the last one.
Any questions? Item, thank you.
And we're also, after this, we're having the event at 924 Main. So we can all go over there to hear the, the results from today's discussions.
Item 4B, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners of particular items to be listed on future agendas, no group discussion is allowed. What I did wanna make you aware of, and this gentleman coming to the, to the microphone will help you, the city wants us to have some additional meetings to talk about...
Building Bastrop.
Building Bastrop. And we're gonna be asked to meet on some weekends also.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So, so I hope all of you are familiar with building Bastrop and what we're trying to achieve there. And in order to keep things on track and moving forward, in order to get you all up to speed on, on where we are, because this is all happening quickly. We're taking input right now as we speak, and we're gonna be writing the codes in the next couple of weeks, and then having to disseminate all of that and vote and move this forward. And so in order to keep us on track and make sure that you all have adequate time to review it and digest it and discuss it and think about it, we would like some additional meetings above and beyond your regular meeting. And I apologize that this is kind of last minute, I will take the blame for that fully. But on January 10th, we would like to hold a joint meeting with the city council, and that would be a Thursday, January 10th at 6:30 PM. That would be the first one. And then following that joint work session with city council, we would like to follow that with two Saturday workshops, one being Saturday, January 12th and Saturday, Saturday, January 19th. And those would be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And I, AM, yes, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Did I misspeak?
I don't know, but you talk a lot faster than I can touch this.
Yeah, sure, and we will, we will email these to you, and I'll, I'll repeat them again. And then we would also have our regularly scheduled meeting in the, the fourth Thursday in January. But, yes, I'm sorry, I, old habit, sorry, old life. So yes, so those dates, again, a joint work session with city council on Thursday, January 10th at 6:30 PM. And then a Saturday workshop, Saturday, January 12th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And again, Saturday, January 19th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then the last Thursday of the month would be your regularly scheduled meeting.
And since we can't have group discussions on this issue, I would request that everybody email Viviana and let her know if you're available.
And we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to everybody, we'll just go ahead and email everybody with those dates. That way you can see them, and then, and then if you'll respond to that email accordingly with your availability.
And we started on a process last December to rewrite the subdivision codes.
Yes, ma'am.
And at that point, they wanted to get everything done by the end of January. However, we made it clear then, and we're going to stand by it. We want to move this forward as quickly and expeditiously as possible, but we'll only do so if we feel comfortable with what's being recommended.
Yes, ma'am.
And we want, we wanna work with council, and a lot of work's gone into here, and I support the moratorium, I've supported it in the newspaper. But this commission is gonna move with what the commission feels is appropriate. And it's based on a lot of the input we get from the community and what recommendations are. So we wanna work with you, we're gonna work with you as quickly as we can, and we're gonna work at with what we feel is best.
Yes, ma'am, understand.
Okay.
Understand.
I would like to request that the sooner you can get us the drafts of those, the easier it's gonna be.
Our goal is to have those drafts available on January 2nd. Yes, sir. So that would be a full week prior to your first joint work session with, with city council.
Councilmember Jones, would you like to speak something?
No, the idea is to have a joint...
And for those watching at home, Ms. Jones wanted to ask if it's a joint workshop or just planning and zoning?
Yes. So the idea is to have the initial joint work session on the 10th. That way, you and council can be in the same room together, brainstorm together, get a general direction, some ideas, and then those workshops on Saturday would just be for P and Z, not a, not a joint work session.
And then our individual meeting?
Again, at the end, would be just P and Z. Yes, sir. So we'll follow up with an email, and again, I apologize for short notice, but do appreciate all you do for, for our community and your cooperation. This is a big initiative, and just one of those things that takes a lot of time because you need to do it right and do it the right way. So we appreciate your cooperation and, and your efforts in volunteering your time to help this community move forward, so thank you.
That's what we're here for, and I think that he's done the right thing.
Yes, ma'am, thanks.
Okay. Item number five.
Most adjourned.
Second? Second. We are adjourned. And before we leave, I wanna say, "Go Saints!"
Oh!
Wait, what?